This is the Village of Peatone Board Meeting for July 22, 2013. We begin by rising to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Riker.
Here.
Mr. Hupkey.
Here.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Here.
Mr. Callahan.
Here.
Mr. Forsyth.
Here.
Okay, let the record show that a quorum is present. As a matter of fact, all trustees are present, and we may officially conduct business. The first order, which is the review of the July 8, 2013 Regular Village Board Meeting Minutes. I will entertain a motion to adopt the minutes as presented, or if you see a reason to correct, please let us know what that correction should be.
Motion to approve the minutes of July 8.
Okay, motion by trustee Riker to approve the July 8, 2013 Regular Village Board Meeting Minutes as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Seceded by trustee Forsyth. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
And Mr. Hupkey.
Clerk.
Okay, motion carries. Minutes are officially adopted as the record of the July 8, 2013 meeting. Trustees, you have in your packet the bills for the month, under accounts payable and payroll. The payroll is for the pay period ending June 8 of 2013 in the amount of $47,433.08. Under accounts payable, we have bills from the general fund totaling $27,209.08. It's coincidental, we have 8 cents in both carries. And also, under accounts payable, from the water and sewer fund, we have bills totaling The two categories of bills from the general fund and the water and sewer fund total $36,469.32. We'll entertain a motion to pay the bills as presented.
I make the motion to pay the bills.
Motion by trustee Wicker to pay the bills as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Riker. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, and the bills paid as noted in the packet. Now is the time for public comment and/or questions, and we do not have anybody from the general public at the meeting today, so I will move on to reports. Trustees, you have in your packet the clerk-collector report and the treasurer's report, reporting on the income for the village for the past month. That's there for your record. If there's no questions, I'll move on to the agenda. We have, the police chief is not here this evening, so there's no police chief report. Engineers' report.
Just wanted to mention that this year's street resurfacing project is going out for bids this week. We'll be opening bids on August 8 at 10 o'clock. August 8, yeah, August 8, 10 o'clock. I know George had handed out a map earlier. I just handed out another one today only because we printed one up as part of the bidding documents, so I figured you might want to refer to that. In the bid documents, the completion date is September 30, and we state that work cannot begin before August 26 due to Will County Fair, right?
Yep.
We're anticipating that we would award it at our board meeting of August 12, assuming that the low responsible bid is within budget. So, that's the plan. If anybody has any questions? The completion date will be September 30. That's all I have, ma'am.
Thank you. Trustees, any questions? Hearing done, then we're going to move on. There's no old business yet to be decided, so we move on to new business, first item of which is the recognition of Diane Hauser, a retiring village treasurer. Trustees, at our last meeting, we officially hired Marcy Hammond as our new treasurer to fit the fiscal year, and Diane Hauser, who has served as a village treasurer, is officially retired as of July 31. Diane had other commitments and could not be here this evening, but I do want to note for the record some of her accomplishments. We will be holding, I believe, on August 2, a Friday, at noon, sort of an in-house party in celebration for her to recognize her service again for all the rest of the folks here who are in the village hall. But I would like to note for the record that Diane Hauser was hired in February of 1998 as the first full-time village treasurer of Peatone. Her prior experiences included being the financial administrative assistant to the mayor and village manager of Country Club Roads. She had also been a part of the financial team for the village of Park Forest, and she had worked for over eight years in the banking area. During the 16-plus years that she has served as village clerk here in Peatone, a very village treasurer, sorry about that, she moved us from the paper and pencil financial accounting to computerized financial software, permitting easier tracking and review of all village finances. She was instrumental in bringing a new auditing firm to review village practices and offer new professional financial insights into village financial practices. She developed new report formats that helped the village president, trustees, and administrator better monitor the budget as well as receipts and expenditures. She helped automate the budget process so that staff members could try what-if scenarios during the budget planning stages and be able to see patterns over several years. She's always been on top of the timeliness of various state, county, and local funding sources so that cash flow would never be an issue in this community. If something did not add up correctly, she was tenacious in discovering the reason why, no matter how large or how small the issue would be. She tracks everyone's vacation time, sick time, accrued benefits, and notifies people when deadlines are coming, and that also includes the IRS deduction, payments, IMR pension, and the police pension information. She's responsible for all investments, debt certificates for both the village and the police pension fund, and reports to the village board and the police pension board. During the time that I have been village president, I always knew that Diane had a handle on finances, and that all I ever had to do was ask a question, and she would have an instant answer, usually followed by, "I have that in a file, let me go and get it and show you," and she would proceed to go to the file cabinet and bring it to me just to show me the paperwork that went with it. I always knew that our audits would come out perfect and that everything was always totally accounted for. Furthermore, she was always ready to help me understand some financial issues that I might not have been familiar with. She has been, has made very positive differences in the accounting and finances of the village of Peatone during her 16 years here, and we are all truly grateful for her devotion and service to the people of Peatone. And I just wanted you as board members to get a little bit more background in her and what she has done for our community. And as I said before, on August 2, it's a Friday, we will be at noon time having an in-house kind of recognition, and we'll present her a certificate, and similar comments to this at that point in time. Moving on, we're going to move on the agenda to approve the route for the vintage tractor ride. George, you got that?
You have in your packet the informational brochure for the vintage tractor ride to be held July 27, 2013. On the back of your sheet is a large-scale map of the area that they are going to be driving. The route within the village, path on that day from the high school to Rathay Road, Corning Avenue East, West Street, West Street South to Peatone Wilmington, East on Peatone Wilmington to Tucker, Tucker to Drexler, then south and out. They will be using our village streets and probably have some traffic control there, so we just need to formally approve their use of the tractor ride route.
All right, I will entertain a motion to approve the route of the vintage tractor ride for July 27, 2013, that is, this Saturday, no, not this Saturday, yeah, this Saturday, and this is prior to the car cruise that takes place in town, so they'll be out during the morning out of the congestion that will be occurring. So, is there a motion to approve the request of the school foundation to sponsor the vintage tractor ride? Motion by trustee Forsyth, seconded by trustee Callahan. To approve the vintage tractor ride route through the village of Peatone on the morning of July 27, 2013. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
And Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, route is approved. Next item has to do with our debt certificate. George, you want to do the intro on that?
The five-year capital plan identified debt certificate. The village received three bids. The low bid is from First Midwest Bank. Bids came in very close to the estimated costs using the budget documents. The budget estimate for the interest rate was 2.251736. First Midwest Bank bid was 2.2536853. Total interest in the budget estimate was $59,445.38. First Midwest bid was $58,000. Interest on the bid was $58,990.28. The proceeds of this certificate will be used for design, construction, repair, and replacement of streets and/or alleys and the associated curved drainage systems, accessibility structures, and sidewalks paid cost additions. As the ordinance authorizing the debt certificate also identifies the successful lender terms and amount, adopting the ordinance also awards the bid. Mr. Phillips from Spirit Financial is here if you have any questions.
Trustees, do you have any questions relative to this or any of the bids?
First Midwest's interest rates are a little bit higher than we've budgeted, but their interest number is less than what we were.
And we'll let-
Mr. Phillips and I had that conversation.
Yes. Let him explain how that works out.
My math is bad.
Yeah, no, your math is not bad.
May I ask you?
Yes.
Actually, in the model, we'd have to have dated mid-February as opposed to August 2, where it closes, so even though their interest rate is higher than aggregate, it's a little bit lower because of the fewer months of the average.
Lower still happens. Everybody loves lower.
Unfortunately, the chairman of Federal Reserve has had some comments about the financial recovery, and everybody's gone, "Oh, my gosh, interest rates started to rise," and unfortunately, he didn't give the jet frock, obviously, the rate interest rates still at 2.53%, but it would have been a little bit better if he would have kept his mouth closed for a couple of weeks. So, unfortunately, you don't direct the federal government. The chairman has to say, everybody has to say, you know, the market is calm because of the understanding that the economy is still a long way to the republic, and the Federal Reserve will continue to do quantitative easing, but the same kind of remark that is responding to some of the challenges. Unfortunately, that's the real problem.
I think what's interesting to note on this is one of our local banks, First Midwest, was able to underbid major companies out of Chicago and Denver by, I mean, we're saving darn near 2% over those bids. It's just a little bit more than half of what those bids were.
$28,000.
Yes.
Just pure out of curiosity, why would it be such a big difference in? You can get local banks involved, you know, they look at it as a good investment, a good relations tool. They're very awesome looking, had it just as an investor opportunity, and so there's always going to be this theory that we keep them buying all as opposed to having somebody that is familiar with the community, looking for investment opportunities. So, local banks are always great to be able to participate in this kind of program.
I know it's great too, is the fact that we're keeping the money in circulation more locally by doing this. All right, so here's, any more questions? So here's where our recommendation is that First Midwest get it for the amount shown. This would be ordinance 13-09, and for the record, I have to read it this way. Ordinance 13-09, an ordinance of the village of Peatone, Will County, Illinois, authorizing and providing for an installment purchase agreement for the purpose of paying the cost of various capital improvements in and for the village of Peatone, and authorizing and providing for the issue of $600,000 debt certificates, Series 2013, evidencing the rights to payment under such agreement, prescribing the details of the agreement and the certificates, and providing for the security for and means of payment under the agreement of the certificates. Is there a motion to adopt that ordinance 13-09 as I have read it?
No.
Motion by trustee Wicker, seconded by trustee Forsyth, to approve ordinance 13-09 as read. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
And Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, and ordinance 13-09, dealing with the debt certificates is officially approved as outlined. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate very much Mr. Ray's assistance during this process. It's been very helpful, and from local consultants to editing and commenting of the documents, it's very helpful to get good teams that we have to participate in some of these projects.
And the working relationship that we have had with Spirit Financial has been equally as appreciated on our side. Thank you. Okay, item D, participation in the IMIC design study considerations and participation in the study design for the Illinois Municipal Insurance Cooperative. George?
I would just like to piggyback on what Mr. Phillips said, and that is, staff up at the front also played an important part in the comments, and they all were very involved in that, so they deserve recognition too.
A lot of people work in other things.
Yeah. As we discussed at committee, the whole Jessica Adelman, if I have that right, this topic is listed on the agenda for deliberation in action. Two years ago, the village switched its property liability and workman's compensation insurance coverage from the IMLRMA, that's a typo in your sheet, to the Illinois Public Risk Fund, IPRF. Jessica Adelman or A.J. Gallagher served as broker and facilitated proposals. Our experience with IPRF has been positive. In other locations, A.J. Gallagher has formed P&amp;L Insurance Cooperative among his clients. Gallagher is researching interest in Illinois. Gallagher has selected client villages with the best claims experience and invited them to participate in the group. Cooperatives are partially self-funded. The savings are found in veteran profits and overhead costs from private insurance companies. The status of the program at this time is that Gallagher is visiting prospective members and asking them to participate in a design study that may result in a proposal to the board. This program is for property liability only and does not include workman's compensation. The action requested this evening is to authorize the village to participate in a design study at no cash cost to the village. For IMIC, the Illinois Municipal Insurance Cooperative, affirmative cost and affirmative action does not bind the village formal participation in the program. That decision's been made. Proposals are complete, probably sometime in October. Just one small correction, there was discussion about, you know, $600 or $700 in legal fees that may be a cost. I don't know if that's before or after the decision is made, if it's not, it could be for us, so. But as soon as we do the bylaws, we need to formulate a proposal.
And all that would be presented to us before the October deadline-
That's correct.
-where we would be voting on this issue, so we would have all of the data, all the costs, and everything available to us at that time. The motion that we're asking for now is simply an authorization by the Board of the Village Board of Trustees to participate in the design study of forming this group and what the rates might be. Is there a motion to that effect?
Motion.
Motion by trustee Hupkey, seconded by trustee Wicker, to authorize the village to participate in the study for the Illinois Municipal Insurance Cooperative. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Motion carries, and we will move forward with that. We will notify the folks at A.J. Gallagher to proceed with us being part of the group that they are studying. Next item has to do with the retail market study. George?
In the village's contract with the Buxton Group for the retail market study, the village is required to identify three primary locations for the study. This request does not mean Buxton will not market the rest of the village, however, much of what Buxton Group does is GIS-driven, and specific locations where trip times, et cetera, are necessary. Stipulation may actually be more important in larger communities where location can heavily impact GIS data. I expect many of the geographic sites in Peatone will have fairly similar outcomes at those locations. Locations must be specific, properties are intersections, corridors may not be locations. Examples might include I-57 Wilmington, Rathay Road in Wilmington, 50 Wilmington, Beecher Road 50, or any intersect, intersection, 98, some kind of consensus on three intersections, three locations to give.
Okay, and this will be the basis of, because we're only a little over a square mile, maybe a square mile and a half in one direction, when they do the measurements for the study to figure out how far, how many miles of weight everything is, most of them pretty much come in within a mile of each other, so it's not going to have a huge impact, but it does establish a basis. It also offers a suggestion as to areas that we think are important to study. And having said that, the obvious one that jumps out is the I-57 Wilmington Road intersection. Is there a consensus that that should be one of the three intersections?
Probably.
Probably. All right, now, the other intersections we might choose have different perspectives on it. If we take, I'm going to skip down right now. If we go to the Route 50 and Wilmington Road, we pull that down further to the east end of town, to use that as another part. We have other options. We could also look at the halfway point, which is the Rathay Road Wilmington Road if we want, or also target going up north to the Beecher Route 50 intersection, or we could even, probably the downtown area, if we chose to say that was an intersection. I think we're probably ahead, though, to pick an outside one. So, having said that, is there, what's the feeling of the board about which intersections we should pull on, or doesn't we?
The three main points probably would be 57 Wilmington, 15 Wilmington, and Beecher Road, in my opinion. Wilmington and Rathay is kind of the middle, so whoever's studying it, we can kind of incorporate that anyways. It depends.
I would agree with that. I think one thing, though, is should we give consideration to the study, the potential in the Iliana?
I think part of what we're going to run into is, the Iliana is still a couple years off before its actual construction starts, and by pulling a known intersection within the village, Route 50 and Peatone Wilmington Road, it sort of draws itself towards that direction. So, I think we could say that it's working out that way.
Or is it incorporated in that area?
Yeah.
And I think the other thing that, you know, that might play into this is, they would probably want someplace that at least has, that doesn't have infrastructure there, at least it's reasonably close and in place, and, you know, just to thought about the Iliana and that. And I think for more of an immediate response, immediate action, we probably need to stick with where we have roads and water and sewer and that kind of thing. And it's easily annexed because it's contiguous or already in the village.
All right. Other thoughts?
I agree with that, the same thing with the 15 Wilmington.
Okay. Other trustees, do you want to speak on anything? I would assume, then, by the general discussion, that those three intersections that we pointed out, Wilmington Road and I-57, Wilmington Road and Route 50, and Route 50 and Beecher Road are the three target areas that we would like to-
I think I keep seven miles. Is that what you're talking about? Is it a mile?
No.
Because when you look at the future, as long as we talk in meetings, we're leaving out 45 Wilmington, Wilmington Road, which is definitely even our planning, is very quite a part of this.
Yeah, and that intersection is in our comprehensive plan.
Yes.
I think if the thrust of this particular study is to try to get something that's a little more, you know, can happen a little sooner, you know, we're still quite a ways away from even being able to annex that or infrastructure.
We've got the big blocks of them. They're going to go there and get property vacant versus here. And especially the Iliana, that's something to date. We've got to give them some kind of information to make this proper, or that intersection. So, that's always an argument.
I think that's kind of what I was trying to get at, too, is that, at a minimum, I think the company should be aware that we're interested in developing in these regions so that they can use it as a marketing tool, basically saying, "We anticipate development, not just these three locations, but there's room for development, you know, just a couple additional patients involved," and see a different story.
And I know that in our progressively conversations with the representatives from mission companies, including the Buxton Group, I pointed out both 45 and the Iliana, and the general feeling is premature to do either of those right at this time, but I will reinforce that those need to be incorporated and they need to be kept in line.
I don't think you should leave that out. They gave our general thinking.
Yeah, and we did make a point of including those in our comprehensive plan. We have land use planning out there, and also has included our master water and sewer plan.
Okay, so, my sensing that the consensus that has is changed, in a sense. We have I-57- We have I-57 and Wilmington Road, also look at 45 and Wilmington Road.
I'll just mention, just...
I, yeah, I...
So, you know, if we gotta stay within immediate things, every street, but there's somewhere in this conversation that should not be left out.
Okay, my understanding was to keep the three that we were talking about, but make sure they understand Route, Route 45 and the Iliana.
Okay.
I will make sure that happens.
But then it's the consensus of the group? All right, then you've got it, George, we'll move forward with that.
You don't need a motion?
Uh, no, consensus is just, uh, coming to a general agreement, uh, based upon discussion of the group, without taking a formal action per se.
It'll be...
All right, um, gosh, that's the... Yeah, that's, that's it then for the, uh, the agenda, we're to correspond, as communications, petitions, or anything we have, uh, water bills are due?
Last day of the month.
Last, the last day of the month, okay, so that he still has that out, still need to take care of that. Um, sidebar item coming up, we just approved the, the vintage tractor route through town this Friday, and we also, this Saturday, and we also have, uh, the car show uptown on Saturday and Relate the Life, uh, Friday night at the, at the junior high school, to keep remembering to call the schools what they are now, rather than what they used to be. Yeah. All right, um, I don't think there's any other announcements. Then I will entertain a motion to adjourn the July 22nd, 2013 Village of Peatone Board Meeting. Motion. Motion by trustee Hupkey, seconded by trustee Forsyth, to adjourn the July 22nd, 2013 Village of Peatone Board Meeting. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Motion carries, meeting is adjourned.
Take care.